The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Welcome. Get started right away with the approval of tonight's agenda. Have a motion by Mary, second by Doug. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three is to approve our consent calendar, which meant at the previous meeting, and payment of bills. Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item number four is to consider action related to Wadena County tax forfeit parcels.
In your packet, you should have a letter, a Wadena County letterhead dated May 1, 2021. This is part of the process that Wadena County is required to go through, dealing with tax forfeited parcels in Wadena County to notify the municipality or jurisdiction that those parcels lie in to find out if there's any reason why, you know, the city of Staples in this case would not want them to go ahead with that sale. One of the, you know, similar to what we did with the duplex lots that we acquired here a couple of years ago, we basically responded back to them, said, no, the city is interested in acquiring those parcels so that they can, you know, we can purge development of them, as opposed to the county continuing to have ownership of them if they don't sell on the sale. So, for, make sure everybody knows what we're talking about, on the second page is actually a parcel listing. One, one parcel, the number thirty-nine, is the, the property between Airview and Spruce on, on Airport Road, that large vacant lot, south of what was Douglas Corporation, north of Prairie View Apartments. And then the other seven are the residential lots that have gone tax forfeit along Spruce Drive. So, the, you know, the remaining two lots, lots twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-four is the one that the house was built on last summer and fall, twenty-five is owned by the same developers that built the house last year. And, you know, at some point, they do intend to develop that, so. So I guess what, what I'm looking for tonight is, you know, if the city does want to acquire those, we can put them together with duplex lots that we already have, go through the quiet title process so they're, so we have marketable title to them, and get, get moving on trying to get development up there. These have been in the tax forfeiture process for, you know, basically about eight years now, so they've not been available for anybody to buy, to build on.
So if we don't buy those or acquire them back, the county hangs on to them, basically they're on the market, right?
Well, the county, the county keeps them and then they determine a value and put them, you know, basically have a, when they have a sheriff's sale, just typically every two years, they'll do a sheriff's sale on an off-election year. And then, you know, with that, you know, basically if you, if you look at the letter, one of the things they're requesting, if we want them to proceed, we need to provide them with, with the outstanding assessment balance that we would be intending to reassess. You know, so it kind of comes back to the whole underground utility component of it. If we do acquire it, it, them, you know, similar to what we did with the duplex lots, you know, then at that point, we can have a conversation about, you know, what do we think the combination of the underground utilities and the value of the land should be, and list them, you know, lump sum for development to occur.
Assessments that are on there right now don't, will get passed on to people to buy the lots when they want to sell.
Correct. We, we would basically re-assess those properties at the time they change hands. So the county, you know, in their letter, they're basically asking what, you know, what's that dollar amount that the city would intend to reassess, so that you don't go in and say, oh, it's a great deal, I can buy a lot for two grand, and then discover that your two grand turned into eighteen.
Twenty.
Well, yeah, and these numbers that are on here are what the county currently has listed, that includes interest and penalties. I think the, the outstanding unpaid balance from our, about sixteen-four, sixteen-five? Somewhere right in there.
Outstanding, that's what the assessments are, I mean, are unpaid for that lot.
Well, that's what the balance were, balances were, because when, when a property goes tax forfeit, all of that just basically gets wiped away. We do have the opportunity to reassess once, once the properties are sold.
I've done a fair amount of checking on these lots, you know, like in other towns where they've, where they've created developments, and, I mean, those lots, they sell for a lot of money because of the assessments, you know, I mean, that's, that's not that uncommon. I mean, these are, these are actually cheap compared to what some of the, you know, you got new sewer water system, you got, I mean, it's all stubbed into the lot, it's ready to go, it's, you know, it's, you know, where if you just built the house on a lot, like, I bought three lots over on the south side, and one of the three has water and sewer, I got to dig into the street to get water and sewer in them. So, I mean, there, there's considerable savings when it comes to the property owner when they go to hook onto the sewer and water, so, I mean, I, it, it might be, you know, it might be like wild to some people, but to me, it's, I mean, these are pretty cheap lots for what, for what they're getting as far as assessments and all that, compared to a lot of other towns that...
Yeah, well, and everything is relative, you know, it's all, you know, kind of based on what, you know, what people either are used to or have been exposed to. I, I would say that we've had more comments about the assessments being high than we have about them being low, you know, from people that...
There's a lot of people coming here from further south. I don't think we're, I don't think we have problems, to be honest with you, I think we gotta get over being guilty here.
Well, and that's, you know, that's obviously a conversation, you know, that we can, that we can have going forward.
How much are they gonna cost us to buy them?
I don't, we don't know that yet, and we, and we aren't committing to buy them tonight. All I'm asking for is, is the council's authorization to send a letter to Wadena County requesting that they establish a price for us to buy them.
Is that, is that something that's optional to us at any time, as long as they're not sold?
I think any tax forfeited property in the city, we would have an opportunity to acquire.
So I mean, there's no rush on this deal at all?
Um, well, there's...
The downside would be that Wadena County would sell it.
It, you know, the, the, Wadena County could sell them, number one, I, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily a negative thing, as long as residential development were to happen. But if we, the, the quiet title process that we have to go through, there's, there's legal fees involved with that, so if, if we're gonna go through that process, it'd be nice to do them all at once, you know, rather than move forward, do, you know, do all the duplex lots next week, and then a year from now, come back and do, you know, do the other ones, but, you know, that would be just a, kind of a doubling up on that, on that cost, but...
If the county keeps them, we don't buy them, they, they sell them. Somebody buys the lot, builds a house on it, then, I mean, it's, what's the difference between the county owning them and selling them, and building a house and us owning them and selling them? You know, we're selling them, I mean, granted, we get the money, we'll get the money for the assessment on the lot, and then whether we get the tax, we'll see you away, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, we have the, whether, whether we sell them, or the county sells them, we have the ability to, to reassess the underground utilities at whatever level, you know, we choose. The, the thing, the issue with the county is, we don't know, they don't do a sale every year, so we're waiting for that sale to happen, and then there's still that quiet title process that, that they would have to go through in order to sell it.
Aren't they, once they're offered a sale, aren't they, from that point on, they're for sale? If they don't sell at the sale, you can go and buy them?
Yep, I think you can buy them over the counter if, for that same price.
Correct, yep.
Yep, and I, I think it takes county board action to reduce the price, you know, we've seen that on a number of Todd County properties, where, you know, they've been through multiple cycles and the price keeps coming down until it finally gets to the, to the level where somebody snatches them up.
I guess the thing that, kind of a burn to me was the fact that we paid twenty thousand dollars for those duplex plots from the, through the county, and if the county would've hung on to them, we'd had our twenty grand, and if they sold, they sold, and we'd still get our assessments back, and, and, I mean, it just, you know, it seems...
Well...
We've, we've got a considerable amount of money invested in those things already, and we...
Oh, yeah, there's no, there's no question about that, and I, you know, I think the, you know, the idea is, because of that investment, you know, we would rather control, you know, the destiny of the, of the properties, and when they can be sold, and, and, you know, to whom they can be sold to, and, you know, what we decide, you know, if the county is solid, and we have no flexibility as far as the purchase price and the assessments, trying to, you know, get creative, you know, at EDA, talking about different incentive type packages, and how that comes into the mix, if we don't, you know, if we don't own them, we don't control a lot of that, so...
We would be sending them a letter, just wanting them to give us a price for them?
Yep, basically expressing interest in acquiring them, and asking them to establish what that price would be.
And says that please return invisible parcels along with the amount of any special assessments, which may be subject to reassessment, that would just, it would be the amount that's on that, that would be the amount?
Yeah, this, this is what's on their system, so I, I wouldn't necessarily even, you know, follow that exactly, you know, in a, in separate correspondence with Missy Lund over there, she basically said, send me a letter indicating that you're interested, and then the county board will establish what the prices are.
Sure.
So, you know, if we wanna at least take that next step and find out what it is, you know, if, obviously, if it's too much, we can always just ask Wadena County, well, you go ahead and sell them.
I assume this year, then they'd be sold on a sheriff's sale?
I, I...
On election year?
I don't know, I, it, it, both Todd and W- Wadena County, it seems to be fairly unpredictable. You know, this, it, I think they were supposed to have one, would have been the, you know, last spring, and, but then with COVID, they didn't, and then it was the general election, you know...
I guess once again, though, they're available to us anytime, right? This week, next month, six months from now, even if they're, whether there's a sheriff's sale or not, we can put in a request for the show interest or whatever, I mean, there's nothing that...
Yeah, I, I believe so.
There's no rush, I guess, is what my point is.
No, and, and, you know, like, like I said, to start off the, the conversation, we're not committing to buy them by asking what they're, you know, what they would sell them to us for. Then, then at least at that point, we have, you know, have that information, and can decide whether we wanna move forward or negotiate, or, you know, what we wanna do with the...
The taxes that haven't been paid on that land is part of the assessments then, too, it's not just all sewer water?
Right, there, there's, I, I think there's unpaid taxes, interest, and penalties that make up, that make up that number. So there's about four thousand dollars above and beyond what the outstanding assessment is. Or, no, two thousand dollars, I can't do math.
But then we would negotiate on that, on whether we would pay those assessments?
No, we, we won't, we wouldn't pay those.
No.
And I, I should have pulled the file to see what they, what, what it was before, but if you look at each lot, you know, there's, there's seven years' worth of unpaid property taxes, along with the interest and penalties, you know, what was, what would have been assessed at that time as well, and that's not that, you know, not that total dollar amount, 'cause it was, it was spread out over a number of years, but, and I, I, the twenty thousand dollar number is, you know, I think total, so maybe it'd been...
For per...
Two thousand per duplex, you know, pad or something like that. And then that, and then that goes in basically as property tax and gets distributed, you know, so some of that we got back, you know, because of the, the delinquent property tax that the city was owed.
But, the, like on the lot number forty, it says eighteen thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, I guess they all are that.
Yeah.
We've already paid the assessments for sewer water, I mean, we've already paid to put that in, correct?
Well, we're, we're still paying.
We're still paying, but I mean, we wouldn't reasonably be charged all of that again. No, no, no. It's the cost of the lot plus the, the other assessments.
Basically, what, what, you know, we're like, looking at is what...
Land values.
I, I guess, I look at it from the standpoint of, you know, make, make the county hole on their unpaid tax portion, and some of the administrative type stuff, and, you know, then the rest of it would be ours to deal with.
Okay.
You know, so I, I have no idea, you know, it's a, it's a different, a little bit different board over there now than it was back then, and, so, all we can do is kind of float it to them and...
Yeah.
See what they come back with.
Well, looking at that initially, I thought, they don't want us to pay that eighteen thousand again, since we're already on the hook for that, okay?
Well, most of that, you know, even if we had to pay it, it would come right back to us.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, that's all, it would come right back to us.
But no, no, that would not be the case.
But there would still be nothing against our economic developer, development, saying that there's lots, these lots are available in the city of Staples, and, you know, available through Wadena County, or, you know, I mean, we could advertise it like that, I mean, there's no, I mean, I, sometimes I, I don't know if I think throwing good money after bad here sometimes, you know, if it gonna cost us a bunch of cash to get it, you know, to get it so it's, we can say it's ours, and, and really, it's, it doesn't really matter, because it's not, it's not important that it's ours.
Well, I think the matter is, and that's where, you know, I'm sitting here thinking of our discussion over the last, what, six months, maybe even longer, at, at the EDA board, I was looking at Melissa, you know, that discussion about the whole incentives and the, the housing things that we wanna do, kinda is where I kinda was concerned that it might go, and it's, the, the, the wheels are spinning a little bit right now, and I think we need to get back to that discussion, especially with this available, because the matter would be, if we're not gonna do anything with that, I one-hundred percent agree with you, but if we're gonna do something so that we can use that, and, so now we control it, but if we're not gonna do anything from the EDA level, or, you know, as an incentive, or find some other type of program, then, yeah, then let's just let the county deal with it. That would be my stake, you know, say on it, would be.
One of the reasons why you wanna have control is some land investor could come by, purchase those lands, build that land really cheap, sit on it, make it worth to earn value, and then note that all that happens out there. That's one of the biggest fear to me about development.
We've had the duplex lots for about a couple of years now, it's not exactly...
Our duplex lots are not necessarily what the city council has identified, finding its own big one out there, and we've been exploring changing those lots and the single family lots.
Right.
So there's been a lot of discussion around that, and some work being done on the engineering side to see how that works to go along with our incentive, as well as, you know, with duplex, I think we could probably get duplex home homes, multifamily develop out there.
Well, it's kind of...
That's the direction the city wants to go, so they'll go lots.
I mean, that's kind of, that discussion occurred quite a while ago, and I didn't know if we were still at the planning stages, or if it's gotten, the parcels have been redrawn, or, or what's happened on that.
Just, you know, a proposal or a possible, trying to maximize the, you know, the utilities that are in the ground. You know, the replating is a process, just have to decide that's the direction we wanna go. And every once in a while, there's wind of somebody that's looking to do duplexes, so... But like I say, in order to sell any of these, whether it's us or the county doing the selling, there's a, a legal process that we have to go through, so if we're gonna go through it, it'd be nice to go through it once, whether that's with all of them or just the duplex ones.
You know?
Well, if we were to purchase them, where would we get the money?
Basically, it would be a fund balance, permanent improvement fund type acquisition.
But I think...
Well, we don't even know what it, you know...
Yeah, I think the question, we're, we're probably getting deeper into the weeds than we really should be tonight, the question is, because like that question, that's a very good question, if it's a hundred thousand or two thousand to buy these lots.
So, so what a motion I'm looking for, motion...
Yeah, I, I'm just basically, basically looking for, for authorization from the council to submit the letter of interest to Wadena County for those tax forfeited parcels, and for them to establish a price.
Which doesn't obligate us to anything, it's just to say, we want first right of refusal.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we can look at it, and we can say, ah, no, we think you're asking too much, you know, we want you to reduce it, or, you know, at any point in this process, we can say, you know what, you guys handle it, we'll, we'll sit over here and get ready to reassess.
And if we don't proceed, we're basically just saying that now.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I'll make the motion that we send the letter saying that we're interested in, in going forward with, you know, whatever they say.
I second whatever she just said.
Yeah, just a minute, I'm gonna see what they are saying.
That's, that's perfectly clear to me.
Okay, so it's to request that the parcel be conveyed to our city through the Form nine sixty-two.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we wanna go that far.
Yeah, I don't mean...
Yeah, we, we want them to establish a price.
Okay, establish a price.
Yep.
Yeah, whatever, you, you write it out, and that's my motion.
All right.
The motion is...
To ask the county to establish a price, that we're interested based on an established price.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ron, that's your, your, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get all that over there? Okay. Any other, with that, I got the motion by Mary and second by Ron, so any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. All right, we'll see what we get. All right, we'll move on to item number five, and that's to consider approval of software as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies.
So, starting on page nine of your packet, and going to... Page twenty-eight, Diane did include the entire agreement with Tyler Technology, but, and Diane put a memo kind of explaining all of this, but, long story short, we are moving towards AMI, I've been talking about this for a number of years, and the first step in that process is to move from our current utility billing and, you know, payroll software that we've been using at least since nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, Avenue or ACS or used to be Xerox, to Tyler Technologies. We've been waiting for Missouri River to finalize their negotiations with Tyler, because Missouri River is, and Scott, correct me if I say anything that is incorrect here, but Missouri River is going to be moving towards time of use pricing, so there'll be different charges to us based on the time of day that we're, we're buying power from them. So in order for us to be able to turn around and implement time of use pricing along with AMI, the software needs to be the same. And so Missouri River, you know, worked with and looked at a number of different companies, and ultimately negotiated a deal with Incode ten, or, you know, Tyler Technologies, and so they finalized that a week ago, yeah, so, so then at this point, we're ready to pull the trigger and move forward with the software conversion. As, as Diane lays out in the, in the memo, you know, currently, our annual price with, with Avenue's twenty-one, five thirty-three, it's a cloud-based service, and then the Incode annual price would be twenty-three, nine thirty-seven. Some of the things that Incode provides that our current one doesn't, you know, is purchasing fixed assets, you know, the receipts and cashier functions, online payments and inquiry, the project accounting, and, and also work orders. There's, you know, the, the fixed asset piece we're doing with a separate company now, so that would save us some money on that side. And so the differential, annual cost differential would be twenty-four hundred and four dollars, and basically the conversion of that is at seventy-four, three thirty, which is an item in the twenty-twenty-one budget as part of the AMI project. And I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to go and look at the video, that was on the link or not, but, and on page ten, just some, what, what is described as advanced functionality, and, I don't know, Diane, do you wanna talk through some of that? Sorry, page, page ten.
Page ten, yeah. So the new system would have custom reporting, which we don't currently have, document management, so for example, you could, an invoice would come in from a department, it would be scanned into the accounts payable clerk, and then saved, and then if you have a question about the invoice later, you can look it up online through the vendor query instead of having to go to the manual file and go through all the invoices and pull it out, and maybe not find it because it's not filed in the right place, or under something other than where you think it is. There's online access to the software, so you could work on your phone, or from an iPad. There's a role-based dashboard, so each of the council members could have access to the system, and you could set up a dashboard if you're interested in certain items, that you would have access to those, so, for example, if you wanted to compare revenues and expenditures and electric, you could set up a graph to do that, and again, every month, once, but actually, it'll be on time, so instead of processing things on a monthly basis, like the receipts, or the usual billing, it would be more readily, so the receipts would be processed at the same time, and the information would be available immediately. There's a workflow, so if I put in a... There's a workflow. So if I put in a purchase order and I want to send it to Gerald for his approval, it just automatically goes to him, he approves it online, and then it goes to Mercedes. And so all that is in the system as opposed to writing out a handwritten purchase order and then having somebody sign in and then give it to Mercedes. She has the pilot file and you can run your parts automatically. So as part of the setup, they'll establish reports and they'll automatically run once.
Sure. So the next section in the in the memo here just kind of outlines some of the utility billing components, the first several there. But it does establish the online customer portal, that they can pay the bill and also go in and look at at their history. Full sheet of paper billing, you know, kind of coming into the current era with graphs. You know, that will be able to illustrate the usage history. You know, the deposits, payment plans and tracking of those payment plans. And then, you know, a whole series of personnel management stuff, which is outside of the utility billing. You know, purchasing, you know, is another component of it. So it definitely much more robust software for just slightly more on the annual cost that will work with Missouri River time of use pricing and the whole AMI system.
So we'd have to upgrade the salt to be able to do the automatic.
Yeah, well, and for the for the time of use, I mean, there's no, I mean, it's Tyler, it's Incode. You know, that's who Missouri River, that's why we've been waiting and waiting for that agreement to get done. Because, you know, not only is it a financial investment to switch the software, but it's it's a process. So we wanted to have it all done before Diane retired.
That's not gonna work.
Put a contingent on her retirement.
Right.
And then we'll be slow.
But it's, you know, Diane has worked with this company before and, you know, good good experience with them. And also Missouri River, like I say, went through a pretty extensive process prior to selecting and did some pilot stuff and all of that with them, so. But yes, Ron, you are correct. The for sure thing is we can't stay with Avenue.
Well, and this doesn't outline our savings in time and staff time for them not to have to go out and read all the meters.
Yeah, and that's a that's a big component, not only from a from a time standpoint and having more time to do, you know, some of our actual projects, but also there's a safety component to that. You know, the biting dogs, the unhappy customers.
The ease of shut offs and reconnects without.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Missouri River actually selected Incode ten to be their software.
Yeah, that's correct.
So if we were going to do our automatic meters, then we have to do their software, right?
Yeah, if we want to be able to do the time of use pricing.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, there would probably be other options for AMI, but Avenue is not one of them. And in order to to not lose money on time of use, you know, billing when that starts, we need to be on the same software that Missouri River is doing it on.
Make it a lot easier.
Yep.
Movement agreement title technology program software that I call Incode ten.
Okay, the motion by Ron, second by Roy. Any other discussion or questions?
If you just, I get it, you know, that's probably, but is there any other electric companies right around in our area that are using this? Tyler Technologies or I imagine there's a whole smorgasbord of companies that have these types of programs or whatever, or no?
Not not that are integrated going forward with our wholesale electric provider, no. You know, that's, and like I say, they looked at at several different options. And, you know, we've been kind of sitting here waiting for them to finalize who they're going with because we need to go with the same company, otherwise we're going to suffer under the time of use pricing.
There are some that are using Tyler Technologies and then have AMI at the same time. Just we have Missouri River as a start of the program, they're doing that just now and that's, we're getting on board. But we were waiting to get on board with them.
Okay.
The Detroit Ex, for instance, has their Missouri River Municipal, they have AMI and they have Tyler, they're building software.
This Tyler, they've been around a while or they?
I worked with them when I worked for the town of Gilbert in Arizona, which has a population of about a hundred thousand at that time.
Right.
And they use one of their products called the Eden System. So they have a whole variety of, they have quarter systems and more robust systems.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also Cody is on the on the Zoom call, I think he can answer every question.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening virtually. But yes, to answer your question, Tyler Technologies, we've been around and in business for thirty-plus years. We have a significant experience in helping municipalities just like you all there in Minnesota be successful in this endeavor. Some examples of that are like Osseo, Minnesota, Champlin, Minnesota, Cottage Grove, Deefer, Falls, just to name a few off the top of my head, but we, Fridley, Minnesota is another one as well. But we have a good amount of experience in working with with municipalities just like you all there to help you be successful in this endeavor. So we're excited, we're very excited to begin a partnership and hit the ground running.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. Is there any questions for Cody since we have him on? Okay. All right, well, if anyone has any other questions or discussion, we do have a motion. It was Ron and Roy seconded, so I'm not hearing any other. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you all.
All right, well, then we'll move on to item number six. And that's to consider adoption of resolution eighteen forty-two, which is the authorization to execute Minnesota Department of Transportation grant agreement for federal airport expenses.
So this is the state piece of the FAA one that we did for the coronavirus grant dollars. The state also needs a grant agreement because the dollars flow through them. So this is part of that thirteen thousand dollar grant as part of the COVID money. So I recommend approval.
So move.
I can.
Motion by Roy and second by John. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Item seven is a couple reports. We start with planning and zoning.
All right, we've got a couple of action items under planning and zoning, but I'll quickly kind of run through the minutes. Planning and zoning commission met last Thursday, May sixth. We had a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home-based occupation occupation, gun sales in a residential zone. Mr. Paul Lindula was in attendance there, he's also here with us tonight to answer any questions we may have. There were no public comments received during the during the public hearing or via any other correspondence prior to that. And ultimately, scan down here. There was a motion in the second to recommend that the council approve the conditional use permit and home occupation permit that was submitted by Mr. Lindula. And when we get to that point, there is a copy of the proposed conditional use permit and home occupation permit in our packets. I believe, is that, is the home occupation permit in there? Nope, there it is. Yep, sorry. So then moved on, had some additional discussion on the proposed solar ordinance. And ultimately, there was a motion in the second and the commission approved recommending that the council approve ordinance five thirty, which is the Solar Energy Systems and Structures ordinance. And that is our second action item on the agenda for tonight. The commission did schedule a public hearing on the energy and oh, rescue me, Scott, energy resilience and environmental plan. But basically, it would be an addendum to our comprehensive plan. So we did go ahead and schedule a public hearing that will take place at our June meeting, June third meeting to look at the energy and environment addendum. And then finally, another public hearing was set. We had a conditional use permit application for the construction and operation of a car wash in a commercial zone. Be just off of Highway two ten between Front and Wisconsin, right straight across from the South Side Mini Mart down there. And according to our zoning ordinance, a conditional use permit is required for car washes. So we're in the process of going through that. Excited to have that development down there, not trying to influence anybody. But then we talked about chickens, turkeys and ducks. So just, you know, the commission, we're having some discussion, just trying to kind of formalize what, you know, what's allowed, what isn't allowed in the in the poultry arena. So we'll have more to report next month on that. And then also had some discussion on a kind of conflicting position as far as orientation of structures between mobile or modular home, mobile or manufactured homes and stick-built homes. I think everybody probably recalls when we cleaned up that twenty-four foot minimum width, eight hundred square foot minimum by adding language to the stick-built R one standards. And there was there was one that that we did not catch in there that's a similar issue. So we're trying to come up with some appropriate language to to correct that, so. Meeting adjourned at six thirty-one. Good meeting with lots of business.
So with that, there's the two action items. One would be to consider recommendation to approve conditional use permit and home occupation permit at eight nineteen Kansas Avenue Southwest.
So move.
And motion by Doug?
Second.
Second by Roy? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck with that. And then the next one would be to consider recommendation to adopt solar ordinance number five thirty. Motion by, oh, did I hear Roy? Did you motion?
Oh, I didn't.
I heard you mumbling something.
Talking to myself.
Okay.
All right, now be careful.
I'm sure you made a mistake.
Sorry.
So anyway, the the proposed ordinance that that you have in front of you is the is the same as what we had talked about. Was that two weeks ago or a month ago at council? Following the process of amending the zoning ordinance as proposed by a planning and zoning commission. But basically, our existing language in the zoning ordinance related to solar has conflicting language in the performance standards and the different zoning categories, whether it's R one, you know, B one, the commercial, industrial, all the rest of that. The proposed solar ordinance that we're looking at tonight, we had a public hearing on, again, with no comments or feedback from the public, basically provides that solar structures would be an accessory use. They're subject to building code provisions and also subject to interconnection agreement with our electric utility if they're if they're tying into the grid. So rather than have anyone who wants to put a solar structure, you know, either on their property or on their structure, you have to go through a conditional use permit. What is being proposed here is to allow them as accessory structures in all of those zoning districts subject to the building code and electrical interconnection agreement.
So this isn't going to make it really hard to put a solar structure on your property, it's just going to make sure it's in a certain fashion.
It's gonna, it's actually going to make it easier to put a solar structure up and establish what the guidelines are. The the language in the ordinance is is largely from an MMUA guideline, so. But it cause, it allows people to not have to go through a, you know, two-month process of conditional use permits and public hearings and all the rest of that.
So move done then.
Motion by Doug and second by Ron. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. All right, then that'll move us on to Public Works Commission.
Okay, so the auditorium on utility disconnect is essentially over. So we're gonna go back to normal disconnection practices, start tomorrow. We did have, it was about fifteen customers that had really built up large, the length of bills. And it was recommended that we work with customers, you know, so pull over that. Pull back, we're just completely disconnecting. So we did develop some payment plans for those customers that have really large bills, we're giving them three months. They have to pay a third of their bill plus their current bill and be done by through July. So once August comes, they need to be current and and if they miss one of those planned payments, they'll be disconnected. So that's that's what we're going for. With the with other customers, we are just going back to normal practices. I think they they found out that as the, during the pandemic, they tried to set rules. There were many health people who were affected by it, but it turned out that it was mostly the same people that that didn't pay the bill in forty or the customers that you double up again. And so, so they're, like I said, they're looking for it or we'll just go back to normal practice. The next item, as it says in the in the minutes, we're looking at different options concerning a customer on the end of our service territory. We have, we are working on something, but we don't have, we don't have anything to announce yet. So imagine the next meeting, we'll have something to bring to the council by that time. We're gonna have a few more customers with large commercial usage rate, but that's no big deal. The wastewater treatment plant, at the last meeting we had, the, it's a monthly construction meeting. Throughout the the construction process, they've been confident that they'll meet their goal and when they'll finish. This last meeting, it seemed like they became less confident, so we'll see. They didn't say they weren't going to meet it, they just weren't as confident as they had been. They just weren't as confident as they have been. So, uh, and I just stopped over there this afternoon just to check in on a lot of, uh, issues of getting materials and workforce. It's been really hard on them too. So they, uh, they'll get somebody to come to work and then they'll, they'll lose them. So they've been, uh, struggling with a lot of the same things that other, uh, business owners have been struggling with. And we're also noticing that in our, in our work, our utility work and things like that, that it's some of the strangest things that, that have never been hard to get or all of a sudden hard to get. We were talking to a guy that supplies us with, uh, water, supplies pipe and things like that. And, uh, they're guaranteeing their quotes for like three days just because things are in such short supply. It's gonna be an interesting construction season for, for not only us, but probably for everybody as well.
Sounds like nineteen seventy all over again. Seventy-three anyway.
I'll have to take your word for it.
The energy. Well, everything, everything in, everything in seventy-three got, everything in seventy-three got short. Now all of a sudden it, it's available, but it costs a lot more money, which is, ends up being the, yeah. You remember that, don't you, Roy?
Well, they, they even had daylight saving time year round.
Yeah.
Didn't work.
Uh, yeah. The last thing is, I guess we were talking about the, uh, the, so, uh, moving forward with the building software. So I'm gonna start moving forward with the controls and meters. That's all I got. If anybody's got questions.
What is the scheduled completion date that, I mean, assuming in the contract, there's a scheduled completion date for that?
For the plant?
Yeah.
July was substantial completion and then I believe it was October was, uh, like five where the building, the old building is knocked down. You know, the landscape is all exposed and everything. So I think it's the, uh, the issue of getting the substantial completion on that is, is where they're starting to feel it a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Scott. And then we'll do the EDA.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Excuse me. And then on April twenty-seventh, uh, the first item was the annual report. People work every week, April. Uh, maybe you have a copy in front of you. I am not going to dive into too deep into that, uh, unless you have any questions and I can answer them. If you want, I'll go deep into that, um, on a one-on-one basis. I'm happy to meet you too. You know, the caller, your person, however, is easiest. Um, I did want to put up a COVID nineteen response. Twenty twenty was a crazy year for everybody, but definitely that's not to tell them. Um, all of those topics that, you know, the access to materials and everything, the funding and the new programs and all of that, that was, um, obviously high priority and, and took up all of the time for myself individually, but, um, you know, also we're our business owners. So, and you can see there's a lot of the energy spent on that, that area. You can read through that, but some of the highlights, the collaborations that were formed in our area, the, the hot home, Medina County, um, Monberry, City of Medina, um, Staples, of course, is in there. The chambers for each of those, each of those cities that they all came, they came together to help get our research in our area, how best we can get the information to our business owners. If it's confusing us what is coming from the federal, um, you know, and they're splitting in out, if it's confusing us, it's really going to confuse those business owners who don't work in government, um, language and, you know, their red tape every single day. So, um, really work together to make sure that, um, we're really giving information to our business owners and, um, in a way that they would understand and actually implement. So, thought it'd be nice to do that. Um, and I guess what I mostly wanted to put out there, if you did have any questions about the annual report, I'm happy to answer those. Um, this kind of spoke about what has happened in the last year here. Um, the annual report, we have a discussion, rather brief, um, about a strategic plan. We're maybe going back to that in a more deeper level about what has been, what has been in my opinion. And, excuse me, I'm also looking for a consultant to, um, assist us with an update, um, as that is expiring here in twenty twenty-two. And we'll be looking to try to sort these out and create some nuance for the next five years. I'll see. And there was some discussion, um, around the control website that suffered from these staples as we're trying to attract, um, developers, be it homeowner or housing developers or industrial, um, site selectors or, um, either commercial and also workforce. Um, but, you know, the commercial, industrial and, um, housing developers are the key ones that I'm looking for about sites that is really easy to find their information. They're not being jerked around or looked around to different websites to get that information. Um, you know, it's easy to use, user-friendly, bright and attractive. Um, they don't want us to dig deep into a site to make that happen. Um, that comes directly from these, that comes, um, from directly from developers that I've also heard, um, at different meetings, conferences, et cetera, or reading the ground cables of site selectors and stuff. So, uh, Golden Shovel is the one that kind of stood out to me. Um, and so it has been cabled until we are, are updating our strategic plan. How it works to do that, um, I think will be a really good decision. A lot of communities are moving forward with doing that. Um, and so we will see where that goes. There's a new program, Restaurant revitalization Fund, um, that is for, uh, ours restaurants, anywhere for the majority, was it thirty-three percent of your sales? I think it is. Um, the primary purpose of your business is to serve food, drink, um, to customers in person. And so typically that's where ours restaurants and those other, uh, checkouts that, um, we have to get a few of them in our community. So a lot of time in the last month or so, as that program came out from the most recent, um, stimulus, uh, has been some of our businesses trying to get the information, trying to spell that out, so, um, very similar to when CARES Act came out. Um, but that one is actually a pretty cool program that unfortunately there is not enough money to go around. And so, um, hopefully the feedback gets our businesses, many of them have submitted. Um, I'm just hoping that they submit it soon enough. So it is on a first-hand, reserved basis. Um, let's see, we had an update from the Chamber and then first back about the house codes. We are in the middle of a feasibility study on the capital campaign. And so you, many, some of you may be seeing, um, whether it be for a one-on-one, um, interview or a small group focus group interview, um, or discussion with our consultant, uh, to identify, um, you know, people who are going to assist us in that capital campaign, but also what is the best, um, route to go as we implement that capital campaign. Um, there's going to be, maybe I'm super familiar with it. The total project for that is, total project cost for that project is fourteen million. We're planning again to get seven point five million or seven million from the state of Minnesota and still make come up with an additional seven million to complete that project. Um, obviously exploring grants and other resources, um, in federal dollars to help offset some of that seven million. Um, but this will help us understand if we're able to, uh, to get that project around. Um, part of that is because that was the feedback from the state of Minnesota. It doesn't, it does make sense that we should have some sort of plan for how it's going to have the other fifty percent of those dollars. Um, but that is the feedback that we got from the twenty twenty bond application. So hopefully as we can show them some concrete plans and, um, you know, studies that were done to show that we can do this, then maybe we can move on up to the list. Um, other than that, we adjourn at six twenty-five. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, that'll move us to open forum. Anybody? Okay. We'll move on to city administrators' report.
Um, just a, a few items I want to keep you up to speed on. Our, uh, sales tax request that was submitted to the House and Senate. Um, as you recall, the Senate modified that to a straight-up LGA, uh, increase over a five-year period. The Senate still has it as a, um, sales tax option. It is now in conference committee. So we'll see what direction it goes. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that the LGA, uh, piece is the outcome. Uh, the other, uh, thing that, uh, that we've talked about before, but just to update on the federal EDA grant application, uh, for community center improvements. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with Mike Anglin at Wins- with Seth, you know, basically trying to come up with a, a plan of attack and figure out what, what those costs might be, uh, what that project could look like. And then, uh, we can work on the application. Um, working to get, uh, second estimates on all of our airport projects, which is turning out to be a lot more difficult than I thought it would. Turns out, uh, contractors are busy. Uh, I think I'm, um, I'm gonna be good on the fuel pump, uh, side of it, struggling on the others, but we'll keep working on, uh, on getting that, um, done. So, um, interviews tomorrow for our city clerk finance director position. So we'll be, uh, doing interviews all day tomorrow and hopefully we'll have a good outcome. And then lastly, um, Thursday, starting about noon, there is going to be some activity down around the football field, the, you know, those U Care commercials where they've got that like five-seat bike riding around different towns. Uh, they're coming to shoot a U Care commercial, uh, in Staples. So they get the water tower picture in the background and, uh, where'd they go on Staples? At Nimrod and some, somewhere else. But, uh, uh, so they've been, uh, working to, um, kind of facilitate that whole, uh, process with, uh, uh, traffic control and, uh, they're renting the community center gym and parking lot for the day on Thursday. It's basically a staging area, but be kind of interesting to see what, how big a production, um, it is to shoot something like that. So, um, so if you're interested, you can go down and take a look.
When they going this time?
Thursday. About noon, I think. Uh, they may, yeah, noon, one-ish, I would say they would start shooting. That'll be interesting. That's all I have.
Just to kind of, the interesting thing was when I, 'cause I had gotten an email. I got that email while I was working on another fun project that, um, this will be, I was just pulling it up because she sent me an email, uh, on Thursday at three P M. It'll drop, she said on the Facebook page. But, um, Rashini, I don't know how you say your last name, Rahumar, who has a, uh, talk show on WCCO radio. She does, it's called Discover Minnesota with Rashini. And so what they're doing is highlighting twelve s- communities in Minnesota. And she had contacted me about a month ago about doing a Staples episode. So we recorded that on Monday. Or what, no, when's, when did I do that? I don't know. Last week.
Last week.
Was it Thursday? I worked all weekend and everything, so my days are, but we recorded it last week and, uh, uh, it's, I just was pulling it up. So ours is airing this Thursday on the WCCO Facebook page and it'll be out there. It'll be interesting. It was like, I had twelve minutes to talk a lot about Staples and each one of the topics we talked about could have been twelve minutes. So, um, but it was kind of fun and, uh, we'll, we'll see how, hopefully that turns out. I had to, she wanted a lot of photos and videos and as I'm talking, they'll be, you know, I'll be basically voicing over, um, some of the things. So be interesting to see how that, how that goes. But it was kind of funny. I was sitting there working on getting these pictures and videos for her when the email popped up on my screen about, from this gal that does, her, her job is just finding locations for photo shoots and video shoots, um, about doing this commercial in Staples. I'm like, jeez, that's kind of crazy, but yeah. So kind of a fun week.
Yeah. Yeah. And you can tell she's, uh, apparently pretty good at what she does because it didn't matter what we threw at her. She had to answer, you know, well, that's a county road, you're gonna have to get a county permit. Okay. Who do I need to talk to? Next day it's done. So.
Anyway, I just throwing that in there on the, that topic, so.
I'll move that way, adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Roy and second by Ron to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?